Bike man? Bee singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
E kiss?
Present.
Fry?
Present.
Fos?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
From?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay.
That was under the air, buddy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, approval of the regular minutes of May 22nd, 2017. Any additions or corrections to it before we approve them?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22nd, 2017.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment, this portion of the meeting, residents will be held to a maximum of five minutes for business and discussion items, they shall be allotted 15. Please give your name and address to council and get back with us. Please give your first and last name, your address, and your ward if you come up to make a comment, please. Bruce Dirking.
I'll be real brief, Bruce Dirking, 8th and Jayhawk Road. Hear a lot of talk about stop signs on 8th Street, which is a through street that we use a lot. Not in favor of a three-way stop sign at 8th and Jayhawk. That's our intersection. Honestly, we've lived there 15 years, never seen an accident. I agree traffic could be a little bit more aware, especially those coming from the east on Jayhawk. But 8th Street again is a through street and we haven't had any issues there. The other one's 8th and Anne. Anne Street carries very little traffic and it has a stop sign. I would suggest your bigger problem's down on North, which carries all the traffic and they don't always use the stop sign. And then you've got double parking in that block and a half from North Street up to Anne and it's tricky with three vehicles.
Pretty narrow.
It wasn't designed, it's just tough. I understand the issues with that. But again, I don't think that a stop sign on Anne Street's gonna solve any problems. If speeding is an issue further north, enforce your speed limit. I think that temporary sign can help, it's been up there a couple of times, but I wouldn't add stop signs on a through street.
Thank you for your comment, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make this evening? If not, we'll go on to the business and discussion items. Chad Hollins, Collections Bureau of Kansas, please step up to the podium, sir.
How's everybody doing?
Great, man.
Fantastic. Well, Chad Hollins, Collection Bureau of Kansas, I want to thank everybody first for all the service that you guys do each, you know, couple times a month, whenever you guys do meet. I think that kind of gets overlooked too often and so thank you for your efforts and for your duty as council members. Secondly, I'm assuming that most of you got an opportunity to look at the information that has been sent out. As I understand it, this has been discussed previously back in, was it February possibly, Debbie? Okay. Hopefully this topic was addressed back in February. I just was mentioning to Debbie, I'd love the opportunity to come meet with you guys and address any questions or concerns and so as that goes, please feel free to ask me any questions or concerns that you may have about it, about the topic of collections. Or if you'd like, I can start off by telling you guys about our company, how long we've been in business and everything on the whole backfield, if you'd like.
No?
Yeah.
That seems good.
Okay. I just didn't want to beat it to that, of course, if you guys already dug into the literature. So, Collection Bureau of Kansas has been around for roughly about 12 to 13 years now. It was founded by a collection attorney who's been practicing nothing but collections law for over 35 years now. So, he wasn't practicing like estate planning or litigation law, any type of other, you know, family law or any of those other types of laws that are out there. He just was focusing strictly on collections law over the past 35 years. So that being said, he's pretty well-versed in the aspects of collections law. He founded a collection company prior to the Collection Bureau of Kansas, which was Ogden Check Approval Network. That was founded back in like 1992 or so and then he had the opportunity to acquire the Credit Bureau of Kansas out of Topeka. So when he had that opportunity to go ahead and purchase that, that's when he went ahead and made that move to the acquisition of Credit Bureau of Kansas and merged the two of them together, Ogden Check Approval Network and Credit Bureau of Kansas, to form the Collection Bureau of collections. So that's how that came into existence, I guess you could say. That being said, the reason why he really, I guess, came up with the agency format of Ogden Check Approval Network was because he had a lot of doctors and dentists and clients asking for him to just make phone calls or send letters and not necessarily go after all of their clients as far as their patients, just as soon as they owed a debt to automatically be sending a letter, then proceeding on with suing them and trying to get judgment, per se. So, a lot of the doctors and dentists just wanted letters and phone calls going out to them and never proceeding on with legal. Well, therefore, they saw a much lower return in recovery. So, he's been doing that for a long time and we've had the opportunity with our internal software, because we don't use, we don't subscribe, I guess would be a better term, to some third-party software company out there where if one of our clients wanted to see some specific report, like Austin or Debbie, if either one of you wanted to see some specific report that our client portal was not able to provide, we have two developers on staff full-time that would be able to push code to develop that report if we don't already have it existing internally, if that makes sense. Which is definitely an added bonus for us. Coming from a software background myself, is before I went to work for CBK, I spent probably about 13 years in the corporate world environment. Four and a half of those years was working for a software company up in Kansas City, that's where we're headquartered at, not CBK, but my previous employment. And whenever I was with them, I did consulting across the US and Canada. But I got to see a lot of different things in that opportunity. So I brought a lot of that over to Collection Bureau of Kansas. Whenever I did that, one of the things that we also do is we integrate, or not integrate directly, but we do work with software companies such as Jayhawk, which I believe you guys are on Jayhawk for both court and utilities, is that correct?
Court. No, utility, just court.
Okay, utility, which one are you on, Debbie?
Fund balance.
Fund balance, okay. So, Fund Balance was bought by Tyler Technologies, I think, probably about six years ago or eight years ago maybe. And I actually am working with one of the head product managers for Tyler Technologies right now on getting some of their reporting and developing more automation. So that's one of the things that we constantly try to do is be evolving to make life more easy and efficient for our cities that we team up with. Another thing that we offer is we work with the Setoff Program, which I believe you guys have been using now for some time, once again, to make the internal operations more efficient. There's no reason why a clerk or an individual from the government entity should have to submit something over here to the Setoff Program to retype that same information they already did once into another spreadsheet and send it over here to a collection agency and then have to sit there and monitor two different processes and that's just for an agency and Setoff. So to go to these two comparisons here, Setoff is the only one that has the capability of pulling from a Kansas tax return. It is a great tool. They are not competition with us whatsoever. They are a, they're a partner, if that makes sense. Okay? Because Setoff will not send any letters, they won't make any phone calls, their prime time of the season is during tax time. Now let's say that an individual doesn't get a tax return because they may be getting paid under the table or something like that, as far as they're a contractor, just getting paid cash, or maybe that person hopped across the border up in Nebraska and is working up in Nebraska. Obviously, they're not gonna have a Kansas tax return then, right? And so, that limits what Setoff's capabilities are there. And so then, that's where an agency can come into play. The only problem with agencies though are, is if that person who owes money hears a radio ad or sees something out on social media or a forum on the internet that says, "Hey, all you need to do is tell that collection agency, if you're tired of getting their phone calls or getting their letters, all you need to do is tell them to stop." Yeah. And guess what happens if they do it again?
Yeah.
You are entitled, entitled being the key word, to up to a $1,000 reward is what they say on the commercials, per occurrence, and it's true. The sad thing about it is, is it is true. Somebody tells Collection Bureau of Kansas, "Stop calling me, stop sending me letters," and we do it again to them, they are eligible for up to a $1,000 reward per occurrence from the agency side. Okay? Coming from our legal side, that is not true. Okay? Because an officer of the court can continue to pursue legally. Or if it's coming from a city attorney or some other collection attorney, they can continue to pursue that thing. But from a third-party collection agency, it is a violation of the FDCPA, Fairness Collection Privacy Act. Okay? So then, moving forward, basically, that's where it brings in the legal side. That's a whole nother different beast there, per se. Because legal, as far as collection lawyers or city attorneys and stuff like that, usually do not have call centers. They don't have people sitting there making phone calls and stuff. They'll send out letters, like demand letters or summons and stuff like that, but they're not gonna sit there and be making phone calls. So, that's where really to leverage the full revenue cycle as a government entity, you need to be utilizing Setoff. You need to be utilizing the agency side as far as making phone calls and sending letters to them also. Then you also need to be utilizing legal, because you're just gonna have some of those people that need that extra push to pay, because otherwise, they just won't. You know? The way we look at ourselves is we are the last line of defense. We are not that, we are not the go-to if that person just, all of a sudden, they owe a debt and it's, they're 30 days late, you know, or they're coming in trying to make payments with you and you're like, "Nope, you're in collections, we're gonna go ahead and send you on there to CBK." And they haven't even been sent over yet. By all means, set them up on a payment plan, work with them. We want the people that are not your primary citizens, that are people that are not really citizens of Marysville perhaps and might have blown on through and gotten a speeding ticket driving through, that are just like, "You know what, I'm not gonna pay this, I'm never going back through that town again, too bad, so sad." Those are the people that we want to help you out with, to be able to get that revenue back that is owed to the city. Does that make sense there? And we utilize all three of those facets, like this that Debbie had sent out to y'all on this here. The reason why we're able to do all these is because we submit to the Kansas Setoff Program and we also do have lawyer, we got a couple lawyers in-house that represent Do you all have any questions on this right here? Yes, Vicki?
Um, I had questions, but I didn't want to see if my questions were on here. Sorry.
No, you're good.
Well, may I ask a question that's on this?
Yes, yes, is that the contract?
Yes.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, let's see, second item numbered, second fees and charges?
Yeah, 2A, section 2A.
Okay. Yes, 2A. Okay. Agency shall charge and client agrees to pay agency 30% on all amounts collected.
Yes, ma'am.
Agency shall retain 100% of any interest collected. Here's my question.
Okay.
Agency and client agree that each party will be returned 100% of all costs advanced in any collection action. These fees shall be reimbursed first to the client and then to the agency and collection process. What does that mean? Agency and client agree that each party will be returned 100% of all costs advanced in the collection action. What does that mean?
That's correct. So, whenever, whenever we're representing clients, a good example of this is basically not a government entity, but like, let's say, a retail business, so, say contractor or a hospital. Hospital's a prime example. Not a government hospital as far as one that's sanctioned by the government, but just a regular privately-held hospital. Whenever we proceed to collect for them, we, when we're taking it over to the legal side, we're gonna go ahead and file, so there's filing fees and there's also court costs. Okay? They advance those filing fees and court costs to us to be able to go ahead and proceed for collections on that. Now, the city, being that you're a government, you're a municipality, so you are exempt of all filing fees and court costs, so you don't have to pay for that there. So, that does not apply to you as far as filing fees and court costs. Okay?
Okay.
That's really the main thing there. As far as any additional fees, there really isn't any, per se, as far as we're not subcontracting with somebody out there to do skip tracing for us or anything like that. We have all of our, all of our stuff in-house, we're a one-stop shop.
Basically, you collect your fees from the debtor?
Yes. On municipal court, the city will receive 100% back of what is owed to them. Now, and that's per the state statute, KSA 12-4119, if anybody wants to make note of that, you will receive 100% back of what's owed to you there. Now, as far as utility, not, you know, public ordinance violations, basically, everything that's non-municipal court, that, those ones, you would receive, do you guys have an ordinance or anything like that that's in place right now to pass collection fees or administrative fee onto the citizen?
No.
Okay. Then, and I think you spoke about that there, Debbie, then in that case, you would receive 70% back of what is owed to you, just like Setoff. If you submit a $100 water bill into Setoff, you'd get $81 back from Setoff, they'd keep 19% of it, if no research was required. Now, if they require to do research, to find a social security number or driver's license number, whatever it might be, they're gonna hit another 5% on there and take 24% of it. That's how Setoff works. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Debbie.
That's how I understand it, too.
Yep. So then you'd get, you know, $76 back. But the only difference is basically, is we would be making phone calls, sending letters, working that account all the way around. And that also, that 30% is regardless of whether we collect on that account from picking it up on our initial phone call to that citizen, or sending out a letter, or if we work that thing all the way through and proceed on with garnishment. So it's definitely in our best interest to get it off the bat, obviously, from a operational sense, but, yep. Does that answer your question there, Vicki?
Well, I have a question, again, item 2A, and then drop down to item 2C, where it says, "Agency will pay client 100% of the face amount collected and 0% of any return check service fee on all checks when collected by agency through the effort of agency." Okay? If you're gonna give us back 100%, that goes against what you say up here, where you're gonna collect 30% on all amounts collected.
On a check, you would receive 100% back of what's owed to you, because that's not an, as far as, that's just a, it's a regular check, so that's viewed a little bit differently.
Okay. Collecting an NSF check.
Correct.
But 30% of whatever you collected hasn't been paid yet. They didn't witness the check, the check didn't come back, they just didn't pay us. So when you collect it, you get 30% of that.
So what we would do in that case, say if somebody came in, bounced a check on their final water bill, then hopped on out of town. Okay? Then what we would do, that final water bill, just to make it round even number, let's say it's $100, come in, stroke a check for $100, and then took off out of town. In that case then, what we would do is you, we would go after the water bill for the $100. We'd collect, because we can only collect on what is allowed to be collected upon. In that case, our 30%, we can't pass on to the citizen unless there's something in place by the city, such as an administrative fee, a resolution or ordinance, allowing us to do so.
And they do that.
Yeah. So, in that case, we would try to, we would try to collect on that 100, that $100, the bad check, it's for the amount that's owed. So, we're gonna go after the debt, the utility debt, and we're gonna keep our 30% on that there, is how we would do it.
But if you're trying to collect an insufficient fund check for the $100, they need that payment for the last bill and it bounced?
Uh huh.
And because it is a check and it's an insufficient fund check, then we get 100% of that back and you collect whatever fees?
Yes. What we would do is we would give you that $100 back and then we would invoice you for our 30% for collecting on that, is how we would have to do that.
Oh, I don't like that.
Well, we collected on, but actually, to think, if that was one check...
Well, why have that in there?
Let me, hang on one second, let me double back, let me double back here, because I just thought this through.
Yeah.
If that hadn't been turned over to us for collections, if that was just a final bill and the person was showing up to pay their final bill and then take off and saying, "Good riddance, I'm done," and so that has not been turned over for collections and they wrote the bad check and you go ahead and turn that, you receive 100% back in that case.
Okay, that's a, that's a, okay.
So yes, yes, because it's not an account for us to collect on yet.
Okay.
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Clear that, thank you.
Yep. That's a tricky one.
I don't know if you've covered this yet, but when I was talking to Debbie about this this afternoon, your agency has a possibility of collection that we don't have, if what she told me is correct, that you can go after their, their state return on their income tax. Can you file and get a chunk out of that that they owe us before they get their check back?
We do that with Setoff.
State Setoff.
State Setoff, right there? Setoff, yes.
In Kansas only.
Uh huh.
In Kansas only. But they can reach across if the person's moved into Nebraska. They have to file a state return because the state, they worked in Kansas that year, then they move out of state.
Who you're with, as far as who you're utilizing right now, the Setoff Program only, can do that. The only thing about that is, is it's, all it is, is it's a software program, that is a good program, it just looks at first name, last name, social security number, and if it sees a match right there...
It takes.
And then it goes ahead and pulls on out.
Right.
Yes. Yep. That's why we teamed up with Greg, the team up there, as far as what's a Setoff Program.
So now, if you, if you do that, is it the 30%, assuming there's no ordinance in place to charge an additional collect administrative fee or whatever the case would be, are you charging the 30% plus the Setoff, the fee from Setoff, or is it all, it's all?
We can't do that. The way that we operate basically is, we charge 30% to collect on whatever comes to the door and manage whatever is coming to the door.
And that includes, that's inclusive of all costs?
Yeah, so Setoff collects on something right now, then basically, we absorb that 19% and we get that 11%. That's where basically, like on the utility stuff, since you don't have an ordinance or anything to pass that be onto the citizen, that's where the main benefit would be for you, is because you would be able to retain that 11%. Now, really where, where a lot of cities have hopped on our program, basically, is because they're like, "It's not really worth the 11%," or they go ahead and put something in place, like that resolution I was talking about and ordinance. But for the ones that don't, they say, "You know what, it's not worth our time to sit there and babysit what's going on over here and what's going on over here whenever you automatically know." Setoff just pulled $20 out of this person's $100 debt that is owed to us, as far as, because the way Setoff works, if a state agency, if they owe money to a state agency, they're gonna take that, the state's gonna get their money first, then it goes down to the oldest and works its way up. So if Setoff was only able to get $20 for the city of Marysville out of $100 debt that is owed, then they go ahead and send you that check for that $20 after they take their 19% out, but that balance is still sitting there. So that's where, if you guys are gonna manage that, Debbie or whoever it is, would have to update us to let us know, "Hey, Setoff just took this amount and the new balance is this," whereas we handle all that on the back-end side.
Currently, the outstanding debt through Setoff, and I don't know how many years it goes back, I forgot to get that, $33,437.
Wow.
That's what we have outstanding.
How much is, gotta say, within the last year?
I don't know that, Darlene, I didn't get, I can tell you from February 1st, when we talked about this, from February 1st to May 18th, we'd submitted $1,022.09 to Setoff and we collected $2,968.57. So it was a pretty lucrative, for tax refund time. I mean, that was about...
10%.
Yeah.
Right around there. And that's, that's good for Setoff, it really is.
And again, I don't know how far back this goes for this $33,000, but that's what we have to, everything.
Anybody else have any more questions for Chad tonight?
So what would it take to put an ordinance in place?
I'm sure you have sample ordinances, don't you?
Is there a template ordinance to that?
Other cities, other cities would probably, I could get with Folksburg or one of those and see what.
Yeah, Folksburg. Yep. One thing I would like to mention here too is, is we, there's no fee to start up with us. We do not run a boiler room type of atmosphere. We're based out of Topeka. All of our callers are right there in Topeka. We, all of our calls also are recorded, so I want to put you guys at ease, knowing that we don't subcontract out to some call center over in Sri Lanka or Malaysia or something like that, you know? I just want to put your minds at ease there, knowing that if you have a citizen feel like they got treated like a second-class citizen, with the, all it takes is Debbie or Austin or any of the people here to pick up the phone and within however long it takes us to pull that phone call down off of one of our servers and to email that waiver file to one of them, they will be able to sit there and listen to that recorded conversation with them. We store all of those conversations for at least five years on record. And if you're ever up in this Topeka area, you're more than welcome to always stop by our office. And we don't get paid unless we collect, so there's no cost.
So theoretically, would we turn them in, would we turn something like this over for 30 days or what would we?
No, we're, we're pretty, we'll, we'll send the letters and we'll try to, I mean, I would say probably 90 days or better.
90?
I mean, we don't, we don't just automatically send people to Setoff. We give them a lot of time.
Okay. It'd be nice to know kind of what our, the 90-day collection rate is. I understand the benefits here, but especially if we're gonna get more aggressive with citizens, I just want to know what, truly what, there's definitely a financial benefit to, that, you know?
Yeah.
Talking about, we have a normal 80% and I don't, it's probably not that, but it's, let's say it's 60 and...
Typically, typically, a lot of our collections are final bills that maybe don't get paid and they leave.
Ah, okay.
Stuff like that, or, yeah.
Well, I'd like to see some numbers on that and how often.
Just to put in perspective, I mean, you know, I don't, don't think it necessarily changes the message any, it just helps put it in perspective.
Sure, sure.
So...
Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at this municipal court example?
Uh huh.
Question. It uses an example of $300 and the debt set off was 57%, which is assuming a 19% fee. Then, assume, let's see, then it does all this, if remitted to CBK and there is a court cost and interest, it tells what the amounts are and it says, "Assuming the same 19% fee by debt set off, it's $97.38." Well, if we then turn it over to you, to your agency, it says down here at the bottom, at the end of all this, the $97.38 set off charge that was charged will be wholly absorbed by your company.
Yes.
Is that a write-off to you? How can you absorb that? It's wonderful that it doesn't come back on the city, we no longer, oh, that you're absorbing that, but how, how do, how can you do that?
The way we do it is it's part of our 30%, so we submit that back to Setoff as far as that 97.38.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Yeah. And the reason why it's 97.38 versus 57 is because we update the set, that total balance that's in there with the court cost, the filing fees, the interest, all of that gets submitted into Setoff. So each day when the balance changes because of the interest going up, and it's not a simple interest, okay, so I want everybody to be very aware of that. It's not compounded simple interest where it's inflating it up. It's based off the Kansas statute, so it says 10% pre-judgment, 12% post-judgment per annum. Okay? So, and that's designated, I can get the statute numbers if you'd like and send them to Debbie. But any business can assess that accordingly, so as interest changes, we submit on a daily basis with those different values. Okay?
Well, yeah, I know you don't have to do that, but as part of your business arrangement, mighty cricket at you.
Well, we're just...
Isn't it? I mean, then we wouldn't have to pay that.
Yep.
Yeah. $97, is that a $300? Yeah.
It's still collected on behalf of the, of the city.
Right.
And so, it's just, we're basically kind of a, I guess you could say, it's a fiduciary And so, it's just, we're basically kind of a, I guess you could say, it's a fiduciary obligation of ours to pay that on behalf of set off, collecting it for the city of Marysville.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions for Chad? Want to make a motion on it for the, to sign with the Collection Bureau of Kansas?
I think I would like to see more, some of the statistics that we asked for first.
Okay.
And I'd like to get the sample ordinance kind of lined up and in place, so we can do it all in one fell swoop.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I really appreciate everybody's time, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, all right?
Send trip back to Topeka.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next on our business discussion, Jake Slupiannik has filed for a fireworks discharge waiver. It's in that packet there. He's not able to be here tonight. The ordinance says till 10 o'clock, and he wants to shoot till midnight.
As long as it's all cleaned up is always my biggest concern. That's what I hear about.
There's neighbors in the area that live around him, have all okayed off and approved it, so...
Cindy told me that, that she's heard of some requests maybe for Monday night?
The 3rd.
Not official requests, but...
Well, this here is for the 1st, so...
Yes, but since the 4th is on Tuesday, that possibly, we might want to allow fireworks later Monday night. I don't know what everyone thinks about that.
Have we done that before? Have we extended the hours, I mean, on the weekend or any of the time, on the 3rd, from 10 o'clock till midnight? I mean, it's not like it's a school night, school's out. Why, why this year, the requests for, for it to go past 10 o'clock, which is usually what we set, on the 3rd this year? Why is this year any different than any other year?
Well, first things first, I move we approve this particular application for fireworks discharge.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion, a second, for the application to approve discharge of fireworks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. All right, do you have some other discussion on this now?
Oh, no.
Not, not on this, but on the fireworks.
Oh, no, I, I just wanted to get that kind of squared away before we went on to discuss.
I think every request we've had like this has been for after, up to midnight.
Up to midnight.
And it was, you know, make sure it's good and dark.
So I think that's just, that's been the kind of standard, I think.
Yes, but like, I was here when Cindy was telling us about, Darlene and I were proven, proven bills when Cindy came in, and evidently some other people. If we're going to do it for them, they didn't submit a request, so I guess we're going to do it for everybody, make it something that, that we allow people to shoot fireworks on the 3rd. And I'm just wondering why this year was different than any other year, if we have or have not done it before. Except by special request of one party or a group of people that wanted to use Dargatz Park or like that. I'm just wondering if it's ever been just like...
I don't know, because I know like in my neighborhood, it doesn't really seem to matter whether it's 10 o'clock or whether, or whether it's 11, 11:20, they still shoot fireworks, you know. The 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, so I mean, it doesn't really tend to matter.
I understand what you're saying.
No, we have another meeting before, so...
It's time for people to get their special requests in.
Yes.
But I think they're just, this is an official as opposed to the unofficial.
Right.
I appreciate that they made this official, because they had to go to all the neighbors. That takes some...
Yeah, they put some effort into it.
You did go to the neighbors.
Yep. Okay, our third item tonight, business discussion, swimming pool manual amendments.
Yes.
Austin let you handle that?
Basically, our manual for the pool said, our pool manager must be 21 years or older, or 21 years old, and our assistant must be 18 years old. And seeming as this year, our, one of our pool managers doesn't turn 21 until end of June, 1st of July, somewhere in there, and the other one is a little bit younger. We needed to update our, our policy, and we might as well update the assistant manager just in case. And the update is 20, must be at least 21 years old, or as deemed appropriate by the city administrator. And that's the same for the assistant manager, must be at least 18 years old, or deemed appropriate by the city administrator. And those are not just simple.
Move to approve the amendments to the Marysville Swimming Pool Staff Manual, as it pertains to job requirements for manager and assistant manager.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for the amendment to update the swimming pool manual. All those in favor, signify.
Ask for a discussion.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, first, I, some of the language is kind of awkward. Could we say must be at least 21 years old, period?
If we do that, our pool managers, we can't have them.
Well, and then, put something in at the discretion of the city manager.
That's what the amendment is.
That's what it is.
We're not going to get too crazy, because it would change all the page numbers and everything.
Yeah. This was, it's a simple, I think it, I mean...
This was to keep from creating a page number issue. Otherwise, it bumps the whole manual, and they still have a lot of staff work. Awkward wording or no?
You mean if we change that sentence?
That's what Debbie said.
Try to keep it as simple as possible.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do.
You don't have to love it, just need to learn to live with it.
Well, there were other changes I would make to that.
Apparently no. Would you actually hire somebody less than 18 to be an assistant manager?
Less than 18?
The 21 I got, the 18 was...
17, 17, I mean, there's 17-year-olds that are seniors in high school. I mean, it's, I'd hate to be caught in another situation. I mean, we were kind of caught unknowingly in this, this year. It wouldn't be high priority to go search out 17-year-olds, that's for sure. But if somebody is an adult, has mature attitude, and I just want to be able to, yeah, just have a little flexibility.
Fair enough. Any more discussion on the topic? Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Notices and hearings. Walter Marlenick, 1205 Carolina. And I don't see Walter here, didn't, oh, yeah, he is here, okay. I didn't see him sneak in.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Not bad. You tonight?
Cooling off finally.
Yep.
Well, I've made a lot of progress, but I still have some work to do.
I don't see where you made any progress. It looks just worse, bad as now as it did before here, when the pictures were taken. I got pictures here of 29, 29, 39, and they're worse looking than, and the one that we took the other day looks worse than it was before. Or just as bad, not any worse, but just as bad.
Well, it's, I guess, spread out more, I guess.
You got more stuff leaning up against the house than you did before in the front. The weeds, it looked like they grew up there pretty tall. You got other stuff laying here. The back, you haven't done anything, according to these pictures.
You want to come see these? He's got them laying out here if you want to see what he's talking about.
This here is a picture that was taken 39. Here, this one was taken 68. Look at all the stuff leaning against the house here. Weeds are all growed up. This stuff is still the same. The back looks about the same, this is not...
That's a section of fence.
I don't care what it is, it looks like junk.
Right.
The neighbors are complaining. People go by there all the time and ask me, what are you going to do about it? And I, I'm not in favor of giving you any more time.
I haven't done a lot of cleanup.
Dave, can you come up and speak on the matter?
Walter, I think, yeah, you might have done some cleanup, but you can't keep bringing stuff in when you're getting rid of stuff.
Yes, the only thing I've actually brought in is a couple bicycles.
Too long, maybe?
I've done, been there for like, explaining to him. Get the porch down, get it sited, get stuff off the east side.
None of it's been done?
None of it's been done.
No, it's in the minutes.
Yeah.
The trouble is, at the current rate of progress, you know, in 2040, Vicki here is going to be getting kind of old, and she may not want to deal with this anymore.
The noise, the noise.
I know it's been a lot of time, but I still need a little more time.
I think we have, the city's been pretty lenient on it.
Yes, you've been very lenient. I can't disagree with that at all.
I think the point is more than a little...
You have some other things I've been working on, and they've been taking my time away from it, but I should have concentrated on it more than I have. And I have been dragging my feet, like you said. It looks worse, well, that's because I was making a fence to cover it up, and I need some place to set all the boards that I cut. I will clean that up tonight when I get home.
I think the trouble is, I, I don't think, if we kick it down the road anymore, we're just, we're just going to look increasingly toothless, because then, anybody else who comes along and we say 90 days, they're going to go, well, you gave the last guy 180 or 360, or whatever it ends up, and, I mean, if we, we get painted down, down that road, we'll just never...
You've been really lenient. I've only asked it for another 30 days. If you don't see any improvement in a week or so, then...
Well, my problem with putting the fence up, you still have the same stuff there. You just put a fence up to hide it. You know, just because the fence goes up, you know, you put it up so no one from the outside can see it looking in. Have you really done anything inside the fence?
And the trouble is, it's on a hill, so it's, it's a super tall fence, you're still going to see it.
You're still going to be able to see looking in there.
And that's part of it, too. I'm not trying to just hide everything. I want to try and get organized, get rid of what I don't need, you know.
I think we need to set a date for the city crew.
I think, I think the last meeting was that, or the last meeting when we decided...
See, I wasn't here on that last one, so...
But you...
You knew, but...
We notified you when to come back.
The previous cleanup, I believe what we did is, we said on Wednesday, we're going to start moving. Whatever you want done between now and Wednesday, do that.
Yeah, we need about a week to get things...
You know, it was like, that's what we did, this is the day. Now, I don't know what our cruise availability is, I don't want to dictate to them a day.
Yeah, like, like Kevin was saying, we need at least a week to prepare for this, because that way we can get through everything else we're doing right now, instead of dropping everything.
Sure.
But like I was saying, the last, the last one, we decided two months down the road that this was going to be the date. But, I mean, that's, that's where we're at.
So what do we actually, what do we need to, what action do we actually need to take? Motion or what?
To start, to proceed with, what? Abandon, proceed with the date. If there's anything, I guess, you want, and we only want to save, get it taken care of.
Okay, so I have a week.
Because the crews will be up and...
Monday.
Monday?
Yeah.
In a week.
Monday to 19.
Monday to 19.
Did I actually get a motion?
We've served...
You want to do a porch?
Huh?
You want to do a porch?
Really like to see it enclosed, if that's what you want to do with it, but you're going to have to make some progress on it, I mean...
Kevin, what happens? Does that lead to condemnation of the house if the porch is not a removal?
You can condemn, you can condemn the porch.
Condemn the porch?
Yes.
But that's a separate, we haven't, we haven't gone down that path.
We've not gone down that separate action.
I'm more worried about the rest.
I'd like to get the yard cleaned up and everything else around it.
I will meet with Dave Monday, next Monday, and have him come up and see what he thinks if I've made enough progress or not.
No, we won't be any, make enough progress, we'll come in and do it.
Right.
No, I think...
If, if it needs to be done.
No, the point is, we're, you, you have a week to save whatever you can save. We don't...
So as far as rock or whatever else is laying around, city crews with heavy equipment will remove it?
It's going to move it. So it's, it's, it's not that we're going to decide in another week, it's that we're, we're deciding now. You just have a week before, if you want to save that lawnmower, because otherwise that lawnmower is going in the dumpster. And then, just, that's, it's anything in sight.
Okay.
Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
We don't necessarily need a motion.
We're just, we're just proceeding, we've been kicking it.
Yeah, we've been kicking it, we've served notices, we've done all that. We're within our legal right to, to move forward.
Just next Monday, our crews will go in and take care of things.
Kevin?
Yes?
Dan Hurst is still not up to snuff.
Dave, Dan Hurst, can you check on that for us again, please?
No, no, he did, he did.
Thank you, sir.
He did bring him forward. He did bring him forward. He did bring him forward.
He wasn't prepared to present.
He's not? Okay.
No. I just asked him if he could, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda this evening.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Presentation of appropriate ordinance, appropriation ordinance number 3652.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 3652.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion on it this evening?
I was wondering on this, Erica Bratton, why we get somebody from Florida to come up here, or whatever, and pay all that money for somebody to give lessons to five?
WSA. WSA. Let them know what it is.
Yeah. Water safety instructor? Why we paid all that money, and then plus, there's mileage to and from to pick her up at the airport at Lincoln?
We are, we're going to get reimbursed for everybody who wasn't a city employee taking that class. They are paying for the class.
Isn't there anybody closer than that?
The Red Cross is the one who assigned the instructor. Nobody in, in the state of Kansas was available. And nobody with, yes.
Nobody?
Nobody.
Not a college instructor?
No.
Not man, not KSU, not, that's where I took mine? Not KU?
For Red Cross certified, this, this was the person. But like I said, this was, this was all going to be, the people that were not city employees are reimbursing us for their portion of the travel and expenses, and their, I, I don't know if we paid the whole fee for everybody, but everything that they're owed, they're taking care of. So that number is going down with their reimbursements.
Okay.
That helps.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please, then.
B. Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echis?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Seven zero.
City staff reports, Austin.
Financials, I included all the, the monthly financials. The main piece I'll draw your attention to is our general fund. It, it is a little high in expenditures due to the fact that we had three payrolls, as well as paying insurance. We usually pay insurance in the previous month, and, and I was looking back at previous years, and the three payrolls usually shows up in, in June. So it was a culmination of, of different things. So it was a culmination of different things. That will bounce back with next, the next, we just got the ad warm taxes for mid-year. And so that should bounce right back. Other than that, we were doing pretty good as far as the year's going. And in fact, sewer fund got a nice little boost with an increase of 10,000, well, $2,000 from last year, but still, it was a nice little boost with the lower expenditures. Any questions on the financials? Next item, crop dusting agreement, redone, took out some pieces, took out, or took care of the spelling and errors that were pointed out. If you have any questions on that.
Craig, you shook it over again?
Yeah, I asked Craig about some of the changes that I made, and he said they were right. I didn't make any, other than deleting the purging portion of it. He said we could delete anything out of that section, and I said, okay.
You deleted that whole section, didn't you?
Yeah, that whole section. Well, I asked him, I asked him about, he called it paragraph three, third section, and he said, you could decide to choose any of that to take out of there. It's whether or not they accept that or not. But since that's what we want, we're gonna present it that way. So I made those changes and for review, and there's just some blanks to be filled in on how much, and...
Dates.
And dates and stuff like that.
Have they determined where exactly on the premises they want to roll out their mat and all that?
Oh, we talked about on the sou, yeah, southern side of the, or the...
You talked about the apron. You're talking about where the tie downs are.
Yeah, where the tie downs are on the apron was their ideal spot, if that is available at the time, and...
Would that occupy more than one tie down's worth of area, since the mat actually expands out under the wings? It looks like it would probably take two tie downs.
It might, it might take two tie downs, but the idea is that they would land, have that space available, and then take off. Because they would only be, the only time they'd stay is if they had a lot of work in the area, and they were doing a week's worth of jobs.
Does the mat stay there all the time, though? I mean, they don't roll it up at night?
That's, I think that's, it's not, it's not exactly, I don't think it's nailed down or anything like that, but...
I just would hate to see us have three planes need to come in, and we've got two tie down spots, because the other two are taken up with a mat for a plane sometimes.
And we can, we can work through that, because we did talk about that space in between hangars.
Yeah, the old drive to the...
The old drive, and if there is an issue, we can move them back to that.
I like that, just because it's out of the way, because we know there's a good substrate, and they can leave that mat there as long as they want. They've got easy access, it won't block anybody.
Right.
I mean, if they're amenable, I think that's...
That sounds like a better place.
Yeah, between, was that two and three? Between hangars two and three?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep.
Does that have, is that asphalt there? Is that grass?
There's a hard-packed substrate. That used to be the main road into the airport.
Yeah. It's a nice little packed area.
Right. Here, you can kind of see on this aerial view that there's something under the surface there. There's plenty of room. It's actually wider than a regular hangar space.
Well...
And it would have, it would let them have direct access out onto the paved taxiway, and it would stay completely out of the way. It's nothing now, but a thin layer of chickweed on top of the crushed asphalt and whatnot.
Doesn't the truck have to get off to the side of the wing? Because that's where he fuels. The wings are where the fuel's carried. Doesn't he have to get off to the side? How's he gonna get access up to the wing?
It should be wide enough room to get in there with that substrate. I don't know. If that doesn't work, then it doesn't work. The only thing is, it wouldn't take up our tires.
He said, he would make that portion work. It wasn't the ideal spot, but he would make that, he could make that work.
Okay, and how does this, how does this coincide with the work that we're gonna have done? Because that apron is part of what they were going to...
If he can't, if he can't come in, then nobody can. So, I mean, it's gonna be, and he knows about the work that's being done.
Okay.
Yeah.
They'll benefit from it in the end anyway.
Oh, yeah. And that's the first thing I told him when he asked, was, hey, I got, we got work, because it's gonna happen hopefully this year.
And by the time they get around to this work, spraying season may be over, too.
Right.
If they'll work with us in good faith, and we don't block up the whole, you know, apron area, I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay.
I think it's a good use, I mean, it's an appropriate use, if you'd say.
Okay.
Need a motion on that?
Uh, yeah, motion to move, yep. Get a motion.
I move that we move forward with the lease agreement with, what's the name? Can you find it?
That's why I did a motion.
Farmers Co-op.
Farmers Cooperative for use of our airport for aerial spraying purposes.
Second. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Carried.
Okay, last thing. Mayor wanted me to talk about potential time for the next budget meeting. I was thinking the second Thursday in July, July 13th, at 5:15.
July what?
July 13th.
13th?
13th, yes. Five, at 5:15, yeah.
What day of the week is that?
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you. Sounds good to me.
Works for everybody?
Works for me.
Everybody that's here?
All right.
Now, let's see, 5:15. Okay.
In here.
In here.
In here.
Let's see.
Yeah, I'll be right back.
Go on. Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Debbie?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Standing committees, street.
Well, Keystone out there from 11th coming in, that speed limit sign, you can hardly see it for the weeds and stuff growed up around it, that 30 mile an hour sign.
30 mile an hour sign, yeah.
Coming towards tension.
Well, then that needs to be replaced, repaired?
No, the sign's fine. You need to cut the weeds around it.
Trim the weeds around the sign, yeah. Grass is growing extremely well this year.
Well, it's got weeds too.
Yeah.
Can't see it till you get right to it.
Yep.
Got that? Okay, then on signage thing, on Sixth Street, as you go down Sixth Street, and where the sign points to go to 77, I think it's at Jackson?
Yep.
Faded so badly, you almost cannot read it. It's on a pole, it's up high.
It's a painted sign.
It's a painted sign.
Oh. It is, it's a hand painted sign on a piece of plywood.
I have to miss that one. Sixth Street, it points to Jackson.
Yeah, it's on Sixth and Jackson, it's on the west side, that points towards US 77.
Point east, yes.
Yep.
Austin, can you remind, you told me, I don't remember what you said, that when we are supposed to review the contract with U.P., the storage, the storage facility and their usage?
It was a year, I believe it's a year, is where we're gonna give them, and we could review that.
We're at like six months right now, wouldn't it?
I want to see, we're getting closer than that. We're getting close.
Okay.
One more thing on the street. I think the seal on the North Street and 11th Road looks mostly all right, I know some spots that look like they need almost crack sealed again, where you can really find the cracks when it's all one even color. But the worst thing I noticed is where the transition from the asphalt to the concrete on North Street is, there just south of the airport. I don't know if it was, just wasn't rough before, or something to do with the equipment, but it is.
It was rough. I thought they were supposed to mill that.
It's a heck of a speed bump right now.
Yeah, and I don't remember being as rough as it is.
They filled it in, but it's definitely gotten worse.
There's a smoke there. It's like it's pushed up right into the concrete.
It's a speed bump, need that on Eighth Street.
There you go.
Still on streets?
Still on streets, Vicki.
Okay, well, is this where I bring up the, what Bruce was talking about, about the stop signs?
On Eighth?
We can talk about...
Police and fire, we can...
That's what, oh, police and fire? Okay.
I think we can talk about what we talked about at the meeting.
Because that's what I want to hear, what happened at the meeting.
As a segue to that, maybe? That's okay.
That's good for me.
We'll wait till we get there, then. Okay. Did we ever find anything out on the levee, on the trees on the inside? You were gonna check on that?
No, I haven't found that out, but I'm assuming a lot of that is railroad, if I'm remembering right.
I think it's ours, but we'll see.
That was the question. That was the question, who's responsible?
Who's responsible for it, so... All right. Water and wastewater? Huh? Street sweeper?
They are going to fix the brakes and eat the cost. And, yeah, I just talked to them.
They should eat the street sweeper.
So they're gonna fix that, and then me and Gary are gonna go down before they try to ship it back, and he said, you should come down and look at it.
Yes.
Before they ship it back and make sure it works, before it comes back.
So I'll make sure those pistons and everything work all right for direction and stuff, because if they're sticking, we don't...
They gotta be warped. Thing was on fire.
Yeah.
Water and wastewater.
Brick wide on that side, huh? Parks and Recreation.
I had heard of a couple incidents with children hurting and cutting their feet at the pool.
At the pool?
Yeah. I heard about that myself, right at home. I think that, I don't know if it's just, I think it's just rough. It's just like the kids have to get acclimated to it, and then by the end of summer, their feet are all toughened up.
Most kids that walk don't get cut feet.
Well, we addressed this in the beginning, at the beginning, when we first used the pool.
Yeah, that first year.
And that, what is it, something bright, finish bright, what's the name of it?
Diamond bright.
Diamond bright. And they came back and did something to the finish, because that was unacceptable. Well, has something happened? Has the diamond bright worn off? Is what's happening? Something's happened.
The only thing that I can figure is there was chipping, and what they did to fix the chipping was the only thing I've seen happen, that diamond brights, the people that sell diamond bright have come to fix anything, and that was just a line along the quote-unquote shoreline of when we have it drained as much as we do. So they came and sanded that about this wide down the...
The edge.
In the beginning, first year? Was that first year?
That was after first or second year.
Okay. Has anybody gone down there to confirm this? Because I'm wondering if maybe...
You can see the line.
You can see where they are.
You can? Then maybe we need to bring somebody back.
They oughta have that redone.
Somebody from Diamond Bright needs to come back and take a look.
I've been, I've been calling and leaving messages.
And they're not responding?
Not calling me back.
All right. How long has that gone on?
Oh, a few weeks now.
All right, let's talk to the Better Business Bureau. Let's start putting a little pressure on them. Let's, let's get it out there that this is the kind of service they provide. I mean, for it to fail for the first year, when we first opened the pool is one thing, but this far out, they know that there was a problem with it?
What kind of warranty is it?
Five, two or 10, I can't remember.
Ten what?
Five, and it's been there seven years?
Years? Five, what, days?
Five or 10 years, one of those two.
Put it in writing. Send them a certified return receipt or something, and put them on notice. I think, don't you think we should do that?
Better find out what the warranty is first.
Right.
Yeah.
It's at least five.
Well, let's put them on formal notice.
I've seen, it looked like somebody was there with a sonar deal, trying to find their leak.
Yep, trying to find the leak.
They find it?
I think, they think they got it pinpointed.
Okay, who are they? Who came and looked at it?
K.R.W.
Who is that?
Kinsler Water. They have a fine, a sonar.
Okay, is the water leak on our side? Are we still talking about the pool?
Yeah.
Is the leak on our side, or is this the part of the pool?
Part of the pool.
Well, why don't we, why don't we get ahold of AHR, whoever did the pool people?
It's probably not under...
They put it in, let's talk to them.
They're going the right way, find the leak. You don't need to go to the contractor, who has no idea where the leak's at. They're going the right way.
We know where the leak is. We've located the leak, right?
Mm-hmm.
So why shouldn't he come back and correct? That's just a matter of quality work.
Choose to say when the leak happened.
Don't care when it happened.
Because usually a contractor only give you a year.
Don't care. My point is, this was their work. If I did it, even if it was out of warranty, and it leaked this early in the pool's life, our old pool was a 50-year pool, and we've had this pool, what, three years, and look at all the trouble we've had.
If we didn't monitorize it correctly, it's our fault.
If we didn't what?
If we didn't monitorize that pipe correctly, it's our fault. It's not the contractor's fault that we didn't get all the water out of it. I mean, I'm not, we don't know that that's what it is.
We don't know.
And you won't, until you dig it up, you're not gonna know. You're gonna know what happened to it once you dig it up, because you're gonna know is it a bad joint?
And aren't those lines supposed to be below the frost line? When you install a pool, don't you install those pipes below the frost line? So that there's not an issue?
That doesn't have a lot to do with it. That, it, yeah.
But they probably aren't, I would think.
Okay.
But until you dig it up, then you're gonna know what it did. So, it's hard to, yeah.
Moving on, Cemetery and Airport.
One more thing on Parks and Recreation. We talked a lot about Lakeview and different improvements for drainage and things, and I'm at peace, I guess, with the rock parking and all that being as it is. But one thing I've noticed, there's a walk-through gate next to the drive-through gate. A lot of people will walk, kids and families who park up above, down the driveway to get in there, and it's dusty enough, it's actually kind of a traffic hazard with traffic and people walking in that one lane path. But there is a walk-through gate. I don't know if they're, I mean, I know concrete's expensive, but it'd be awful nice if we could, if we had a concrete path.
Concrete sidewalk.
So I walked through that walk-through gate, people would probably choose that over the rock driveway, and it would get people out of the road, just because of dust and kids running around. And people park out past where they're supposed to anyway.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a real cluster down there.
It's pretty busy up there on game nights.
I think that's something we probably should work out in part of our plan to, we're already doing concrete work in the area, at least, that would be right there, so...
Place and fire.
Do you want to do the, talk about the wellness report thing first? It's in the packet.
Can, yeah. Let me get it from the computer here.
I think we've been waiting a while for this.
Yeah. We got our wellness report from Pam Schröler over at the fitness center over here, and according to her figures, I mean, it looks like things are going well.
Is this just for one year, or is this since they started this?
That I do not know.
Well, it says from the original... Well, it says from the original.
Yeah, it says it from the original, the addic collection.
Addic collection.
From day one.
Okay. It's been from day one, so.
Which was how many years ago now? Two?
No.
Not that long.
Not that long, but I'd say up to years.
I'll bet.
Four years.
Probably more than that, Debbie, 'cause I was on there for that. I was off for four years, so.
This doesn't tell me an awful what. Couldn't we have like individual breakdown, I mean, not, not necessarily names?
Right.
But officers, number one, number two.
That would be kinda, 'cause they could, that's still kinda singling them out. 'Cause if you got, you got James Lees who's, and then you got, uh, whoever else, which is, and you can go, "Oh, I know, I know this one. I know who that is." That's kinda...
But even, uh, even who participates and...
Are all of our officers participating in this?
They're supposed to be required.
Well, I know they're required to. That wasn't what I asked. I said, "Are they all participating?"
I've had guys tell me, they go down there and they see some of them come in, and they go in and they change their clothes, and they come out and sit down and play with their cellphone or something the rest of the time.
See, I've heard, I've heard people say that, but I mean, I go there regularly enough, I've seen officers working out, at least three different officers, you know, and I haven't seen that, but I'm not saying it doesn't happen. But I've seen at least three of them, but I can tell are, you know, taking it seriously.
The same three?
They're different three officers. And I try to go at irregular times to, to see if that's happening, so.
I like the comments you put in here, though. I hear many positive comments from customers at Marysville Health and Fitness of being able to interact with the Marysville Police Department as they are pleased to see the employees taking care of themselves while conducting a positive example for the public, so.
It does make them seem more approachable, but in the, in the vein of, it's nice to have all city staff, no pressure. You know, out in the public and kind of dredge down capacity.
Right.
Yes, and I might mention that Austin has been out there in the public and driving the little, little cart down, down Broadway. I won't say what he was doing, but he's down there.
He was socializing.
And it's good to see you doing that, Austin.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I would like to say about Austin, too. I've had several people say how approachable he is and how, you know, pleasant he is to talk to. And, and they feel comfortable talking. They don't feel intimidated, and he's willing to take a moment to stop. I mean, that's, that's one of the comments that I've heard, you know, a lot of people make.
Thank you.
To the point that this is from day one, I mean, she has all the data, the current data. It seems like we could come up with a goal for the next year.
Benchmark.
A benchmark that says, based on their current stats, here's an achievable goal. So at least you've got something more current, 'cause you would expect more luck.
It'd be nice to have maybe quarterly results or something, so that way you can see.
At least every six months.
Yeah. And, I mean, of course, as long as we can maintain, and hopefully we do maintain a consistent police force, there'll get to a point when I think you'll kinda hit, you know, it'll level out. And then you want it to be maintaining, but we need to know where that is.
Yeah. Does she make, she, I say the year at that?
Yeah, we're kinda all over right now yet.
Hey, in the beginning, I think the first review that they did, they said that there was, uh, let's say fifty-two pounds lost, and one officer had lost forty pounds. So between the other eight officers, they had lost twelve pounds among them. So, yeah, I mean, if you wanna know who's lost the weight, just look and see when we order new uniforms, who the uniforms are for.
And I will, I will say, though, too, that there, I mean, and I think Pam would agree to that, and a lot of people would, that it's not even all about losing weight. There's guys, you know, there's officers you can see have kind of leaned down, and they may weigh almost the same, but they might be a little bit better shape.
Yeah.
There's a lot involved.
Do we have, do we have, I know other forces do. Do we have, do we have them do tests, running tests, strength tests? Do we, do we put our officers through that? I talked to a police, uh, department, they initiated that. And, uh, there were gonna be three officers that if they didn't do something, they were gonna lose their jobs. They had six months to, to, to get up to the proficiency set by the department, and all three of them lost their jobs because they didn't make the mark. So, do we have a proficiency? Are they, do they run a certain length in a certain amount of time? Or they, I mean, I don't know how you, I don't know a proficiency test, you know? So I don't know what they are, what they should do or should be able to do in order to do a job as strenuous as it can get if they have an encounter with somebody.
I guess I would count that, but I'm not sure in my, the priorities of my, the police force here, that I would make that my number-one priority. I mean, given however hard it is for us to get officers, I, I get your point, but I don't make that.
And, and the hard-to-get-officers thing's what rings in my head. I mean, I wish we were the LAPD and people were beating down our doors to join the police force.
Well, you know what? We spend all kinds of money providing them with the best tasers, with the best guns, with the best rifles, with the best vehicles that taxpayer money can buy. And I don't know why we do not expect that kind of quality from the officers who are driving those cars, shooting those guns, and using those tasers. I don't know why that's just not part of the formula. We're paying for the health club.
But if there is such a standard, maybe we could, but unless there's a standard, I don't know, then you're just, and maybe there is.
And, and, you know, and, and just to run down, down that path, we set a standard and we start, you know, losing officers, we have trouble recruiting as is. What do we do then?
So what you're saying is, we are hiring substandard officers because we can't find anybody else? You're saying they, they wouldn't qualify, so let's don't make a test for them? Huh?
I mean, you wouldn't, you know, I, I think it's complicated.
All the things I could get a beef on, that, no, no pun intended, that, that wouldn't be one of them. I mean, I just, I mean, I, I think they should be healthy. I don't, I don't disagree with you, but if I'm gonna pick on one thing, that is, well...
Well, what is your, what is your list? What would you do first? We provide them with the best equipment. What, what would, what would be, if it's not number one, what would be number one?
I'm not looking for fault, that's the thing. I'm not trying to find a fault. I think, I think, given our situation, I just think we've got a good group, and I don't know. I just don't think I would, I would harp on that. That's just personal opinion.
Well, there are some things like vision tests.
Oh, yeah.
Some things like that, but...
Yeah. But you gotta pass your driver's license out, so I guess.
I'm sure.
Yes, he's a suicide guy at all.
Well, I know, that's true.
We know. I mean, that's any call, Don, on their own.
I said I was...
And we have job protection.
Maybe, I don't know.
'Cause I know, like, if you got a CDL, you know, every couple of years, you gotta get your medical card. Yep.
Gosh.
All right. Anything else on the wellness? Okay, do you talk about your committee report?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give my synopsis, and then Brad, you can correct and add to my thoughts. It's been a little while now, hasn't it been?
Couple, two and a half weeks.
Three weeks. Um, we discussed the issue of North Eighth Street, traffic control, um, the idea of a stop sign at Eighth and Anne. There's concerns about it. I think we've kind of kicked that around before as far as the parking situation around that corner and visibility. Chief Ackerman said he has gone up there multiple times and run radar. He really hasn't found a speeding problem. Now, that's not to say it was, you know, just at that given time, but he said on balance, people were staying fairly well below the thirty mile per hour speed limit, mainly because of the parking along the sides. It does seem like you should be going slower than, than you are. But the street is wide north of Anne. We talked about stop signs, you know, whether it would be more, more of a good idea to put one at Eighth and North rather than Eighth and Anne, since that's a busier intersection and it has a little bit better sightlines. That would be a four-way. We didn't necessarily come out in favor of that, but that might be a better option to get people to slow down. It wouldn't cause the, the parking problem that Eighth and Anne has. Really, I think a lot of the issue was, I mean, this for me personally, that I've heard one person in particular who's vocally in favor of putting a stop sign at Eighth and Anne, and then I've heard a couple of other people who are vocally opposed to it. My, I've expressed to constituents, "Hey, you know, get a petition together, get a group of people together, come to council, tell us," you know. If the, if the neighborhood's in consensus or close to consensus on it, then that's what Chief Ackerman said as well. The, the majority of the people in that area came to it, to him and said, "This is what we wanna do, come to council." I think that'd be something we should consider, but as is, I think the committee's kind of agreed that it's, it's more of a, a, a one-person's issue than the group's issue. So, Brad, you add to that.
I think she, uh, constituents had that from three different people, and, and again, I think I may stress this, doesn't make, a petition doesn't necessarily mean...
You'd agree to it.
It's gonna be great, but it certainly goes a long ways to show that one more person, that more than one person is, is really supports.
And I'm not saying that, you know, that person's concerns are unfounded or anything else, but, you know, we're trying to do our due diligence. If we put a sign where every individual asked, we blow the sign budget. There's, I mean, there's a lot of that, so, you know. As far as traffic control, um, Eighth and Jayhawk aside, you know, I don't know what the council's opinion is on Eighth and North. There's a lot of land all turning traffic there and a lot of California stops, but, you know, whether that could improve the situation was kind of, we left up in the air.
Eighth and North?
Yeah.
It's got stop signs north and south.
Two-way, it's a two-way stop. East and west, not north and south.
East, yeah, east and west. North, you're talking about?
On north, not on eighth.
And I don't remember us talking about Jayhawk at all. I mean, I don't remember.
It was brought up on here.
To put a stop sign at Jayhawk?
We didn't discuss that at Police and Fire.
Yeah, we didn't discuss that one, 'cause it was discussed here, so.
Okay, well, um...
Vicki, do you have an opinion?
Well, I have an opinion.
Okay.
Shock.
I would, I would make a motion, I'm not going to, to bring this to a vote, because if we voted and you voted it down, and you would consider if they came to the council with a petition, we wouldn't be able to do anything about it. I think we have to wait so long or somebody who voted, uh, what, no, changed their mind, reconsidered? So I'm not gonna bring it to a motion. If you would more consider it and be more apt to pass it if they came to the council, uh, soon with a, with a petition.
Well, and then the petition, should that be only people who live on those streets?
I think, no, I think anybody within a block of that intersection in every direction would be considered. And obviously, they're fairly easy to get ahold of. We have a fireworks request. It's like half those people on our package.
Then if they, they do have a petition, uh, I think they should sign their name themselves.
Right, and I, I...
Print their name, put their address.
Yes.
I did, I did send the person in question an email back, uh, per request of the mayor, instructing them on, um, yes, we would like a petition, this is what we'd like, we'd like your name, or the name of the person and the address. And it, and it, I vaguely, I vaguely said, like, neighborhood, not to, not to drum it down to right here on the four corners, so.
How hard would it be? We have that, like, fireworks waiver form and this stuff. Would it be to have a basic request for city council action type form for things like that?
We, we, I mean, we don't have a petition. A petition is a, is a paragraph and some lines.
Well, that's, and that's basically what that waiver was, and then it had a spot for the name and address and, you know, all that. I mean, I think some people don't know where to start with it, and I don't wanna dissuade people from doing it. I'm all in favor of it.
Well, I, I even said that just the sentence that she wrote, I mean...
Really? Yeah, take that in a signature page.
Put that in the signature page, and I reemphasized that it, that it really needs to be on the agenda. It can't be just brought, it needs to be, and so when they had to submit it, and...
Right.
I, I kinda followed up.
Have we had a lot of wrecks up there or something? What's the deal? Now, I got a guy that lives up, been living there for thirty-some years, and he said he sees no problem with what the way it is.
It's a lot of the combination, this is what Chief Ackerman said, and since he's not here, I'll kind of paraphrase him, but was that it's the way the street's designed. It looks, people look faster than they're, than they're going than they actually are. He said he'd been running radar. If he was guessing how fast people were going, he would've guessed higher than they actually were. It just, the way it funnels through there, it looks like you're flying.
Somebody parked on either, either side of the street there, one car can pass, and if this guy's going fast and this guy's going fast, who's gonna yield? They cannot pass together.
The bigger one?
Huh? The bigger one?
The bigger one.
The bigger one.
But that's the same.
But there's also...
You get to, the car on both sides, and it's...
There's no sidewalk there.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk.
There's not.
No, there's not a sidewalk.
Well, no, but I mean, there's a lot of, I mean...
And I'm saying, people who like to walk the streets, they have to step out around those cars that are parked in the street, and they have to judge how fast this, this guy's coming and this guy's coming. I mean, it's just, it, we do not even wanna think about having to put sidewalks up there. That's an expense we don't wanna have, when all we'd have to do is put a stop sign in. And paint those lines.
You're gonna put stop signs all over town then, is what I'm saying.
We don't want stop signs all over town.
They come down Fifteenth Street like crazy all the time, too.
By Dargitson there, yeah.
Okay.
I just, I wanna make sure the police can, we did not recommend.
No, not at this time.
It was, it was a conscious, I'm just saying, we're recommending it.
Correct.
Yeah.
What, um, did we discuss anything else that you brought to council, you remember?
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps.
Do you wanna talk about speed bumps?
Well, we talked about experimental speed bumps. We were gonna get the price on, on what, a semi-permanent one on...
It's relatively inexpensive, I mean, yeah. Well, uh, on Walnut by the pool.
Test it. Test a semi-permanent.
You already got a stop sign on Walnut. You don't need anything else on Walnut.
This was at Walnut and, uh...
Like mid, mid-block.
Don't need nothing there.
So, that's, yeah, we just, we did discuss that.
This discussion is a test location, since that was a concern with speeding kids crossing there.
Something I've noticed is a lot at the intersections on the corners, um, trees and brush have grown up. And isn't it supposed to be no higher than like eighteen inches on corners?
The brush and...
Trees or shrubs or whatever.
And things on given corners.
Yeah.
I mean, we try to catch it where it's at.
Catch it where it's at. There's a stop sign in town that the, the tree, you can't see the stop sign anymore. It's literally...
Yeah, we need to know about that stuff, so we can, we can tell the people that own the...
Call that one in, Kevin.
I don't remember, yeah, I, yeah, but I said, I don't remember what was that ride off.
We try to catch those and, and get the owners to, to correct the, the, the problems.
Did you ask if there's a specific, specific requirement?
I think there is.
So you have sightlines over?
There, there's a, there, you gotta, you gotta have it, I don't know the exact, but you gotta have...
You gotta have a view.
You have a view, yeah.
Is that on a controlled intersection or any intersection?
Some of those are controlled intersections where there's no yield or stop signs, so.
Yield right away.
It's just a matter of time till both people think they have the right of way.
Right. No, it, it, you've got a, a tri, a triangle of sorts.
Well, I can tell you Dave Lind is trimming his trees back on all his rental properties, just so you know.
Good. Anything else on Police and Fire?
Yeah.
Administration and Finance.
Uh, do we have any totals yet for the Mother's Day chicken barbecue?
We have totals. I haven't analyzed those. I've been concentrating on some other things.
But we will have the, maybe next, or maybe workshop, maybe next time?
I'm hoping for next, I'll hope for next time.
Thank you.
No appointments, serious wage termination, city attorney's gone, no executive session, roundtable discussion. Bill?
I don't have any, Phil.
Nothing this evening, okay. Your lean?
Well, it's good to have Bill back.
It is good to have him back.
I might mention that the, at the Kester House, the community band will be having concerts on Thursday evenings at seven-thirty through June and I think a couple of July. And then I'd like to thank, uh, all the city crews for all the work they did for Memorial Day and Big Blue Rubber Days and the press box and bleachers. They've really done a terrific job.
That, that does look nice, press box.
Did a nice job on. Brad?
I just wanna thank Austin and Debbie and the rest of the staff for doing their, uh, updates. It's very, I know sometimes I've, I've found recently that I'm not always as good as I should about reading them completely. But it's still very helpful, and Austin, yours has gotten, I think, very good. I think it just, it, all the things we talk about, there's a lot of it in there, and you can get that little snapshot of kind of where we're at, so I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do. Todd?
Couple things. I kinda wanna give kudos to Brian Frogel on the work he's been doing up at Lakeview. I spend a lot of time at softball games there right now, and then you go up there and he's, "Go, go, go," and he's getting these kids to stop throwing this ball over here, and he's going and helping up here, and just concession stand and breaking this, and just always on the go. I, I don't know how many hours he actually puts in up there, but it is, oh, God, be unbelievable. He's got a heck of a tan. Uh, also, the good job, I don't know what part of our city crew it was that cleaned up the tree that fell on Twelfth Street yesterday, but man, they got that thing cleaned up so quick. My, I told my kids about it, and we went to drive up there, probably twenty minutes later, and the dang thing was gone. I was like, how on earth did they clean that up so fast? They really did a good job getting the street open at thoroughfare, and I was, I was very impressed. Thought that was awesome. That's all I got.
Vicki?
I know we discussed the scoreboard at Fell Field, and it was a big expense, and it cost the city nothing because it was donated. And I would like to read the names of those who made donations to bring this fine piece to the city. Bulldog Boosters donated three thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, Lee Ring Trust, two thousand five hundred dollars, Sons of the Legion, three thousand five hundred dollars, Anthony and Kelly Schrodle, three thousand five hundred dol...
Schradl.
Schradl? Schradl? I'm gonna get that right. That was a nice donation. Anthony and Kelly Schradl. Thank you, Anthony and Kelly. Pepsi, five hundred dollars, and Marysville Sports and Rec, five hundred dollars. That's a lot of donations that will not end up costing the city. Thank you, thank you, you generous people for your donations. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I got just one to add to there. The Sons of the Legion is gonna pay the expense to put it up.
Oh, the holes in the concrete and that?
Which is about two to three thousand dollars. And they're gonna try to do it in the next couple of weeks.
Cool.
And that's all I have.
Excellent.
The only thing I have, uh, I wanna thank Janice for the, check out the library or June issue here of what's going on at the public library. And like to thank everybody that helped with the car show and, uh, Big Blue Barbecue. I think it was a huge success again downtown. Lots of people. We like to see people coming to town, so.
I move to a juror.
Second.
All in favor? There you go.